Hi, good evening. I'm gonna call to order a Planning Commission meeting of, sorry, March 22nd. So at this time, if we could do, if Commissioner, Donor, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that. Madam Secretary, could you please do roll?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a swearing-in ceremony for myself and for newly-elected Commissioner John Gabbard. Thank you, Kathy. So moving on, the next item on our agenda is the reorganization of the Planning Commission with nomination for a new chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Eric Nelson.
I'll second. Are you willing?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Donor, and yes, I am honored and willing.
So we could vote, please? All right, that is unanimous, so congratulations. And then for a nomination for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Donor for Vice Chair.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. Sophie can vote, please? So that passes unanimously, congratulations. So do we want to switch today or next meeting, or?
Next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay. All right, so congratulations to both of you. Look forward to having more flexibility next meeting. Um, so moving on, item three will, for the approval of the meeting minutes from February 22nd.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second. I'm trying, oh, I'm sorry. So it passes four to one with a one abstention with John not being present at that meeting, so thank you. At this time, do we have any public comments for any item that we currently do not have on the agenda?
No, Chair Opal.
Great, thank you. So moving on, we have no items on this evening's consent calendar, so we will open with a public hearing. Item number four coastal development permit, CDP 20-0022, and site development permit, SDP 20-0021, to permit a 328-square-foot addition and remodel to a historic house and a 354-square-foot addition to the detached nonhistoric garage for a second-story office at 24721 El Camino Capistrano. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, we do. Senior Planner John Champa provided a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Opal and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the requested application for coastal development permit and site development permit located at 24721 El Camino Capistrano. The project is located within the Dana Point specific plan, within the coastal medium-density residential zoning designation within this, that specific plan. Project site is also located within the coastal zone and appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. As you can see, it's look, is a corner lot located along the street frontages of Old Golden Lantern and El Camino Capistrano. Just to give you a little background and the history of the property, the structure was built in 1928 as a single-family residence. It was associated with the most early period of development within the city and is associated with the Woodgrove era of development. Back in 2009, the property was added to the city's Historic Registry as well as entered into a Mills Act with the city of Dana Point. These are some photos of the existing conditions and elevations of the property. As you can see, you know, the front main building here is of its general and original configuration. Some of the key prominent features associated with this structure are the large, or the L-shaped second-floor deck, as well as the L-shaped configuration along the front. The Spanish colonial revival architecture, which is represented with the terracotta tiles, smooth-coated stucco, and vertically-oriented windows and doors. The requested project's scope includes a 328-square-foot addition and remodel to the main residence, as well as a 354-square-foot addition to the detached nonhistoric garage. The first-floor addition and remodel will include a 227-square-foot addition that would also result in the expansion and remodeling to the kitchen. It would create a new laundry area and pantry, as well as a rear entry to the entertainment room. The second-floor addition would be 101 square feet and was resulting in an expansion to the master bedroom and bathroom. The 354-square-foot addition for the second-story detached garage would be located towards the rear of that structure. And then additional improvements include exterior modifications to maintain the Spanish colonial revival architecture of the historic structure. The proposed additions and modifications are in conformance with all the applicable development standards associated with the Dana Point specific plan, the, and the County of Orange zoning code. As you can see here, there are some existing legal non-conforming conditions related to the interior side yard setback and the setback of the garage off the alley. However, all the proposed additions are in conformance with the required standards. This is the site plan illustrating the proposed project. As you can see here, the areas in gray are the proposed additions. They're primarily focused towards the rear portion of the main structure, as well as along the Old Golden Lantern frontage, along the first and second floor. And then the detached garage, as stated, is locate, the addition is located at the rear of the structure. And all of the proposed additions do conform to the required setbacks. Uh, just to give you an illustration of where and what the improvements are being proposed, this is the first-floor plan. As you can see, it's projecting out towards Old Golden Lantern on the first floor, as well as some, uh, and then on the second floor is proposing to expand towards Old Golden Lantern as well for the expansion of the master bedroom and closet. And here is represented the, in the dark lines, the proposed new walls for the stair, interior stair access, as well as the new studio or office above the garage. Here are the elevations represented before you. Here we have the south elevation, so as you can see, the addition is, is stepped to differentiate from the original portions of the structure. As you see, it's a low roofline elevation. And then on the, uh, looking from the east elevation, you can see that it is also inset there, as well as on the first floor, the shed roof design is incorporated to help differentiate the design. Uh, it should be noted that the city's Historic Preservation Consultant, Architecture Resources Group, did review the project, as well as with staff, to ensure that the project did conform to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Structures, and found that the proposal is in conformance with that, as well as the design requirements in the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance, to ensure that the proposed project does not have any negative impact on the historic resource and is compatible with the architectural design. So for the detached garage, that is not historic, as you can see, the second-story addition is offset, and that design is intended to comply with the required setback requirements for the, the rear and side yard areas. And it does comply with the height requirement as well. So the project requires a coastal development permit due to the project, due to the scope and location in the coastal overlay, and complies with the required findings in that it does not impact public access or environmentally sensitive habitat, as well as it complies with the city's Certified Local Coastal Program. Site development permit is required for the, the review of the addition to the historic resource, as well as for the addition to the garage, which is non-conforming and located in the setback area. So associated with the addition to the garage, all the proposed floor area does comply with all applicable development standards. So it is in compliance with those requirements, as well as, as previously stated, the review of the historic resource by staff, and ARG has found that it is in compliance with the requirements of the city zoning ordinance. And should also be notated that staff did reach out to the Historic Society, and they all, they had reviewed the application, as well as spoke to the property owner, and they are in support of the application, and a letter is provided to you from them. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the requested coastal development permit and site development permit, subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for that report, John. I'd like to open it up for any Commissioner questions of staff at this time. Vice Chair Nelson?
Thank you. Jonathan, a couple of questions for you. Is the garage itself, that building, considered historic?
No.
It's not, okay. And on the house, is it a state or federally-listed property?
It's only, it's locally listed.
So it's a local, okay, got it. Perfect, thank you.
All right, with no additional questions, I will go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item this evening?
No, we do not.
All right, so now I will close the public hearing and open it for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Donor?
If the owners are here, I'd like to thank them for allowing this property to be put on the historical tour a number of years ago. I was fortunate enough to tour the house, and I walked by it on the weekends, and it's really well-maintained, and I appreciate the pride of ownership that you've taken, and I fully support this project.
Commissioner Murphy?
And whether we, you know, live in the immediate area, or we're going and taking our walks up there, and that house has always been very intriguing, and it made you, kind of made you feel like you just came from another era, only it was done very, very nicely, and it turned out that, I mean, it was a little worrisome at first, because we just didn't know where we were gonna end up, but it's, it's a great project.
Vice Chair Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. You know, preserving our history is critical. I think it's an important part of, you know, what we do as a city, is ensure that, you know, the past isn't forgotten. And, you know, the architect and the applicant and their consultants has done a great job of doing just that here. I'm excited to support a project like this, and I've long been a champion of historic preservation myself. It's definitely the harder path, and hopefully that's recognized in many ways, but, you know, it's not lost on me, and for that reason, I'm fully supportive tonight.
Echoing what Commissioner said, I'd also want to thank both the owners and their team of consultants, and the city staff, and our team of consultants. I don't think there's anything in California entitlements that's more difficult than a coastal development permit and historical permit combined together, so the fact that you survived that whole process, I applaud you, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. I think my fellow commissioners summed it up very well. It's a nice addition and really keeps the historical and architectural intent of the building. So with that, I would welcome a motion for this item.
Right, Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, I'm here, that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 20-0022, and site development permit, SDP 20-0021, to permit a 328-square-foot addition and remodel to a historic house, and a 354-square-foot addition to the detached nonhistoric garage for a second-story office at 24721 El Camino Capistrano.
Second?
All right, if you could, please vote. That item passes unanimously, so congratulations on your project. On this item, can I ask, though, on the agenda, Carl Iverson's name was spelled incorrectly? So, small correction on the agenda, if we could, please? So moving on, item number five, tentative parcel map, TPM 20-0003, and conditional use permit, CUP 21-0005, to allow the condominium conversion of a residential duplex for individual ownership. And do we have a staff report this evening?
John Champa has also provided the staff report, thank you.
Good evening again, Chair Opal and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, the case planner for the requested tentative parcel map and conditional use permit for the condominium conversion located at 26392 Villa Canyon, Canyon. The project site is located within the residential duplex 14, or RD 14, zoning designation within the city, which is located within the community of Capo Beach, or Capistrano Beach. The project site is a 9,630-square-foot lot. As you can see, it does front three, or has three street frontages, which is somewhat unique in this area. And just to give you a little background about this property, in 2017, the Planning Commission reviewed a site development permit for the requested project, which is of two detached residential units, or a duplex, which was approved. Each unit is just over 2,000 square feet, with two stories, four bedrooms, and three bathrooms. The project complies with all of the applicable standards of the RD 14 zone, and the project was completed in 2018, and upon that completion, the property has been rented. So it's been rented for the last three years. The project's scope and the request before the Planning Commission this evening is for the requested tentative parcel map and conditional use permit, which are necessary to allow the condominium conversion, which would allow for the individual ownership of the units. No physical changes are proposed to the site as part of this proposal. Here's some photos of the existing conditions. As you can see, the project was constructed per plan, and as represented, it gives the appearance of two separate, single-family dwelling units, with separate street frontages, separate garage access, even their own private rear yard areas. This is a site plan illustrating the configuration of the properties. As you can see, as it stated, they're two detached structures with their separate access and street frontages. Tentative parcel map is necessary, as stated, for the condominium conversions to create two condo units. The project is conditioned to require the review of the CCNRs by staff, as well as the city attorney, and the project complies with the necessary requirements for the condominium conversion in the city zoning ordinance, is that the project is a high-quality design, privacy is provided between the units, individual utilities are provided, as well as separate trash areas. Conditional use permit is necessary for the conversion of existing units into condominiums. The project is consistent with the requirements in the general plan and zoning ordinance for such a request, and there are no adverse impacts to the adjacent properties. As you can see, the property is already constructed, and it is in, in character with adjacent properties that are improved with single and multifamily structures within this zone. And, and in that, that it is integrated within the uses within the vicinity. So staff is recommending approval of the tentative parcel map and conditional use permit, subject to the findings of, and conditions of approval in your draft resolution. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that reporting, and John. So at this point in time, I'm gonna open it up for any Commissioner questions of staff? Anyone? Vice Chair Nelson?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you, John. On this project, I do recall when it came through back in 2014, is there, my assumption is that they can't do a lot splitter, subdivide the property because of the lot, the parcels become too small? Is that why they're doing a condo map?
That's correct, yes.
And then, you know, I'm assuming the, the use permit is the, we discussed it a bit, that the use permit's the conversion vehicle for existing developed property? And then what type of other things, other than just standard impacts, are we looking for under that type of use permit?
So for the conditional use permit, the city's looking for ensuring that it's a high-quality architectural design, the separate utilities, separate trash, and and the compliance with the general plan and zoning code. So those are the key elements that are under the analysis, as well as, you know, additional notification requirements required per state law for the existing tenants, which have been provided.
Okay, great. And then last question, do the CCNRs address a situation where you have one building that needs to be replaced? Let's just say thirty years from now, the owner of one condo wants to replace it. Is that replacement, meaning, you know, they have to tear it down and rebuild a new house, or they want to? Is that covered in the CCNRs typically?
Uh, I'd have to defer to our city attorney on that. I think I can only have a guess.
The CCNRs have not been provided to staff for review at this point, so when they are presented, I guess we would look for that type of information.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, thirty years from now, somebody comes up with one house and.
So perhaps, is that typical of a CCNRs, the city attorney? I'm not sure if there's anything in the staff report that might help, but for standard CCNRs.
Yeah, so the question really is around a bigger, or down-the-road concern about rebuilding one of the units. So you've got two homes that are on one parcel that are now air, basically air-right condos. What, how to, what, you know, what rules as it relates to development standards? And, I mean, is that just our own code would, would come into play with building separation setbacks and? Okay. So they could, in theory, do that, add any type of architectural, you know, requirements within, you know, the two, between the two owners, but otherwise it would be, okay. Perfect, that helps, thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Gabbard?
Thank you. Is the, the common area slopes, are they individually metered, or is there gonna be a separate system that the HOA, as the two members are taking care of it, and just, are they individually metered right now?
I'd have to defer to the applicant on how the metering is actually set up, since currently it is a duplex, but, or, under one ownership. However, I believe typically a separate meter for, for water service is provided for the common areas. However, I, it sounds like that's an accurate statement.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I will open it for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak on this item this evening?
No, we do not.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner discussion. Anyone volunteer to start? Vice Chair Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with this, with this request. It makes sense that somebody would want to subdivide what already looks like two individual homes, and I'm in support of it.
Any additional comments?
I, I also had some questions about the CCNRs, but since they've not submitted yet, I'll defer that. But I, I was impressed with the quality of the development that was approved, and what they drew is what showed up. So I, I support this project.
I live very, very closely to this project, and I've been up and down that road with people and for many, many years. It, what they have, what this project now is going to be is, is just a huge portion of what people see when they go up and down Canone Road, Cannon Road, Canone. And it's very nice to see it that way, and see it in the future.
Commissioner Gabbard?
I support the, the project as well. I want to also thank you for allowing me to spend two hours reading definitions in our zoning code, so I understood how this thing was coming together, so I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. With those comments, I will open it up for motion.
I move that we approve tentative parcel map, TPM 20003, and conditional use permit, CUP 210005, to allow the condominium conversion of a residential duplex for individual ownership.
Second?
Second.
All right, if you could vote, please? Okay, that also passes unanimously, so congratulations on that. So we'll move on to item number six. It is the tentative parcel map, TPM 20-0002, variants V20-0003, minor site development permit, SDP 20-0014M, and administrative modifications of the standards AMS 21-0001 for a triplex condominium that proposes to exceed the maximum height for the zoning district, retaining walls with increased height, and a reduction in the required common open space at 25022 Silva Road. Do we have a staff report this evening?
We do. Before we start, this is, this item was originally considered by the Planning Commission on February 8th, 2021. So I've asked Commissioner Gabbard to review the, the video from that meeting, so I wanted him to, to confirm that he has done so and is available to participate in tonight's discussion.
Yes, I can read a statement if I can. Uh, good evening. As you know, uh, I was not at the first public hearing for this item. However, since being appointed to the planning commission, I've watched the videos from the meeting and I've read the staff reports and consulted with the city staff on any questions I've had. Additionally, I've also visited the site twice. I have also consulted with the city attorney and I've also advised that because I've reviewed the documents and videos that I've mentioned, I'm able to participate in the public hearing tonight and able to vote on the item.
Right, thank you. With this, I'm gonna turn over to John Champa for the staff report.
Good evening, Chair Opel and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the requested Silva triplex. Just to give you, uh, as you have previously been presented, uh, the project, I'm gonna give you a brief background and then uh, am available for any additional follow-up questions as well as details to the old presentation. Uh, so the quick rundown of the project scope is for uh, two residential structures that encompass three units on the site. Units range from approximately twelve hundred square feet to fourteen hundred square feet. Each unit has its own dedicated two-car garage and one uh, guest parking space is provided on-site. Unit A is proposed to be, which is the front unit, uh, thirty-two and a half uh, feet tall and unit B and C, which is the rear structure, is proposed to be thirty feet tall. Retaining walls are being requested ranging from uh, five point seven five feet up to fourteen feet in height and the project is requesting a height variance. The entitlements that are required for the project are a tentative parcel map uh, to allow for the separate ownership of the individual units as well as a uh, variance for the increased height of the units, um, as previously stated, to uh, thirty feet for the front structure and thirty-two and a half feet for the rear structure. Uh, the minor site development permit is requested for the retaining walls uh, up to fourteen feet in height as well as an administrative modification of standards to reduce the common area open space required for the project. Just to give a little background, as previously stated by um, Director Wizneski, the project was presented to the planning commission on the February eighth uh, public hearing and considered the request for the project. The planning commission requested that the project, or the planning commission continued the project uh, to allow the architect and staff to meet with the neighbors uh, to provide more detail and have a discussion and answer questions regarding the project and inform them of the details associated with it. Uh, potential conditions of approval were discussed by the planning commissioners at the hearing if the project were to be approved, which identified uh, that the temporary power should be provided at the site and the construction not rely on uh, generators as well as no future roof decks would be allowed for the proposed development. Uh, it should be noted that that condition in the resolution, uh, there was an error in that and that it um, the word no got left out, so for condition nineteen, it should uh, read as no future decks shall be permitted for the development. My apologies for that. Uh, so the the sat, the meet, the site meeting occurred on uh, February twenty-third of this year uh, to meet with the neighbors of the prop, neighbors of the project. Commissioner Nelson, myself and the project architect were in attendance. The site, uh, the side property line adjacent to um, on the su- along the southern property line was staked by the project applicant's land surveyor to provide additional context for the um, review of the uh, project and inform the neighbors in terms of um, uh, the proximity of the project to their uh, structure. The architect also provided updated survey and site plan and explained the project design in detail uh, up with the up, updated information, which is included as supporting document ten, which included an expanded upon survey of the site that illustra- further illustrated the uh, the structure that is located to the south of the project uh, off of Copper Lantern as well as an updated um, site plan illustrating the setbacks to the the jogged portions of the structure uh, as well as a preliminary grading plan illustrating those features as well. Uh, and it should be noted that um, a- at the meeting, all of the requ- all of the questions associated with the project were answered uh, by the uh, by the architect and/or staff or Commissioner Nelson. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the requested application subject to the the findings and conditions of approval in the dra- draft resolution. Staff's available to discuss any of the project details further uh, as well as the applicant is in attendance. That concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you for that report, John. I appreciate it. Um, do we have any commissioner questions of staff at this point? No? All right, with that, I will open a public hearing. Do we have requests to speak this evening?
Yes, we have seven public comments.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I will call your name and you can please um, go to the podium, state your name, your city of residence, and you'll be limited to three minutes. So first speaker is, is it Joe Pittson? John?
Testing, testing. Yep. John Pittson, Dana Point.
So you can go ahead and just.
They just go?
Yes, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Siambo. I commend the planning commission for working with the developers to design something that would work on a difficult lot. Certainly, we are not opposed to a lot being developed just within the guidelines and constraints established by the city of Dana Point. I keep thinking about the last question asked by the commission to Mr. Siambo during the meeting on February eighth. Mr. Donner stated, "The city of Dana Point does not guarantee views, does it, Mr. Siambo?" To which he emphatically replied, "No, it doesn't." But the more I contemplate the development and design of the three units, it's hard to get over the fact that the commission guaranteed unit A a view. Unit A is all about view. The commission is granting them an eight-foot variance on unit A to assure the view. Why isn't the garage on the second floor and the grades for all the buildings the same? This would soften the impact on the green space from the neighboring building not more than seven feet away. So the commission can't, nor Mr. Siambo, emphatically say they do not guarantee view. It is just that you and Mr. Siambo decide whose view matters and should benefit financially or be impacted financially. As this project so screams, it is all about the view. So I ask you to review, no pun intended, and reconsider the grade level of unit A. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you for those comments. The next speaker is Brett Lindstrom.
I have provided four pieces of paper. If you guys could look at those while I'm going through this, 'cause I wanna point out it serves certain codes as well as the detailed drawings provided by the architect. Uh, Brett Lindstrom, Dana Point. So uh, when we were at that meeting, I asked about the finished grade because they're saying they have a variance at unit A at eight and a half feet and at the units B and C, it's eight feet. But when I got the code, it's "Building height and height of fences and walls for new residential subdivisions shall be measured from finished grade." It's not finished grades, it's not finished grade of each. There is one finished grade on each property and there is one high point on each property. I asked peo- asked contractors that worked in Dana Point, they all told me one finished grade. I asked people that worked for the city of Dana Point, they told me one finished grade. If you guys can please pull up this drawing right here, this is one that's not, doesn't have a grain on it. You'll see the high point is two hundred and ninety-eight feet, the low point is two hundred and fifty-eight feet. That's forty feet difference. To code twenty-four feet, this is forty feet. You're doing a variance of sixteen feet, a sixty-seven percent increase. Also, last time you said that they're gonna do, if they didn't do this plan, they would just do a retaining wall and that per code, they can just do the retaining wall, so that's why you have to do this variance. If you go to the second page of the codes that I have for you, go to the very bottom at the retaining wall, it says "The building height measured from top not more than thirty inches of fill." So with the retaining wall, they can only measure up thirty inches. As you just saw in John's, they have retaining wall that are fourteen feet high. It doesn't start at the top of the retaining wall, it starts thirty inches up from the bottom. Also, driveway entrance. So for the first ten feet of the driveway entrance, you're allowed ten percent grade. After that, you can go to fifteen percent. If you guys will pull up the same drawing I had before, if they were to move their garage to the front off Silva, like every other house on Silva, you just take, you go straight into your garage. You don't drive down a hundred and twenty feet on flat land, take a right turn into your garage, you go straight into your garage. They have the garage at the very beginning, they can start that fifteen percent grade. That's forty-seven feet at a fifteen percent grade, that would lower the bottom seven feet, at least seven feet. And then the top unit, since they're going straight into a driveway, 'cause it'd be the same type of unit as unit C, that would lower down as well. So they would probably load, lower the entire thing at least eleven feet. Okay? Also, now you flick at the green, that shows the new entrance of where the garage should be, like every other house on Silva. It goes straight in there, it doesn't wrap around and level it out. Okay, back to this other drawing, well, without the green on it. If you see before the garage, the reason why they have the garage level is 'cause obviously your car sits inside the garage and it has to be level. My, why do they have sixteen feet before the garage? Why is that level? Sixteen feet at a five, fifteen percent grade is two point four feet. There's another twelve-foot area that's level, that does not have to be level, there's not a garage there. That's another one point eight feet over four feet. My final thing is based on variances. The variance request is made on the basis of hardship condition and not as a matter of convenience. It is convenient for them to put the garage at a lower level, so they raise the height. The lower, the first floor of units B and C have an ocean view. The first floor and the second floor have an ocean view. They're greedy, do not approve this. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Shannon Lindstrom.
Shannon Lindstrom, Dana Point. Um, good evening. My husband and I live directly adjacent to the proposed project at three three seven five eight Copper Lantern. In addition to all the concerns that have been voiced so far and for the rest of this evening, there are three areas within the code that I'd like to highlight as it pertains to the Silva triplex. First, code nine point six seven point zero five zero, basis for approval, conditional approval or denial of a variance. Section A, number six, "The planning commission may grant a variance with such conditions as are found necessary to protect the public health, safety and general welfare and assure compliance with the provisions and standards included in the code provided the following findings can be made." Number six, "That the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity." Materially injurious can be interpreted as being harmful or having a negative effect with regards to both the tangible, i.e. the physical property, as well as the intangible, like perceived value or property value. "We are aware that private views are not protected by the city of Dana Point, but it is the responsibility of this planning commission to consider the negative effects this property's variances will have on the pre-existing homes in the vicinity. Although a beautiful new home to replace a distressed, empty lot would normally excite any neighbor, we've had several personal real estate sources tell us that the mass size and close proximity of this project, reducing both our, our home's privacy and natural sunlight, would likely bring down our own property value and would therefore be materially injurious." The second code I'd like to discuss is nine point zero five one three zero regarding general design compatibility and enhancement. "Any new building or structure shall be designed to create a unified, functional and comprehensive site plan with an integ- integrated architectural theme that is compatible with and will complement and enhance the subject and surround, of surrounding properties. The factors used to evaluate design compatibility and enhancement shall include but are not limited to architectural style and detailing, massing and bulk, color and materials and scale and proportion. In the owner's application for this project, they included several images of the homes and structures in our surrounding neighborhood. Or if you've had the opportunity to drive by the project, you could quickly deduce that the majority of the homes would fall into the coastal cottage style with light and neutral colorways. Based on the renderings provided, this triplex will be modern, contemporary in design, featuring a significant amount of dark black siding. Even if this variance is approves, if the variances are approved for this project, I would ask that a motion be called to require that the proposed designs be reconsidered to feature colors, colors and detailing that is more cohesive with the current neighborhood." The last code I wanted to bring up was nine point zero five one one zero regarding measurement of building height. Um, it's been brought up many times that this is difficult topography because of the grade at seventeen percent, just missing the twenty percent hillside requirement. The twenty percent hillside requirement with a roof pitch of less than three twelves, which the project is, is twenty-nine feet. So even if this did fall into the hillside category with a twenty percent grade, it would still require a variance. So please consider these points in our city's code along with all of the other concerns addressed tonight before you make your decision. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, Tim Wolford.
I could just briefly remind the audience, no clapping, no cheering, no booing, no yelling. Um, this is a meeting, so thank you. No worries.
Good evening, commissioners, Tim Wolford, Dana Point. As before, I'm not going to bring up any more issues other than with what the people have brought before, but what I wanna point out to you is what's been conveyed to me thus far by the commissioner, by the the development community and by the architect is regardless if there's a variance or not, given to the height, the overall height of the project stays the same. In fact, what's been brought up is that a variance that wouldn't even be asked for had retaining walls been built and new levels been put up, we wouldn't need these variances. What I wanna point out to you is we don't know that because there's no record of the design using that original model that was possible without asking for these variances and we don't know what type of problems could arise or what type of variances would be needed for that. Going through these plans and looking at just the basic geometry of it, the amount of dirt that gets to be brought into to make this project happen is in the thirty-seven thousand cubic feet. I have no idea who has done the analysis of where this, h- how the construction gets done and all that's involved, but as Brett pointed out, when you simply look at the grade of the driveway coming down and the fact that they are not utilizing the possi- the the possibility of using fifteen percent, sticking with the ten percent, all that's happening here is we're, the the developers trying to raise up the level of the lot to attain the greatest view. Now, my position is that unless we can take a look at what this plan looks like without the direction that you guys sent them into in order to get this height variance, look at the actual building, the retaining wall, along the property line and see what's involved with that and whether or not they would need variances for that, there's no point in even looking at this particular design because they may not be able to have that in the first place, the height that they have. We don't know how much dirt excavation and height of retaining walls is necessary to do the plan in a fashion that doesn't require the height variances that they're asking for. And the last thing, I, I, I'm not really sure how the solar energy type stuff goes on, but I'm assuming that there's a requirement for that at this stage when you're doing new construction and I'm wondering, what is that gonna look like on top of the roof? Are we gonna have more solar panels to even erupt more view or are these gonna be flat? What does that, that look like? And that's all I would say, thanks.
Thank you. I'm Donald White. I spoke here on the February, at the February eighth uh, meeting. I did not know, we were not notified about the meeting that took place on the twenty-second or twenty-fourth of February or whatever, so we weren't, we were not in that group. My concern, um, our concern as owners of this building at thirty-three My concern, our concern as owners of this building at thirty-three seven fifty-one Kai La Prima Vera, the building has existed there for forty-three years. In November, it will be forty years since we purchased the property. As you know, there are two empty lots adjacent that butt into our property, and over the forty years that we've been involved and to my knowledge, the three years before that by the original builder, there were no problem with debris flow or drainage from those lots that intruded into our property. However, this building, because of the long wall that runs down and it perpendicular into the side of our property, we have some considerable concerns about that, which I voiced at the last meeting, because there's no way to know exactly how that'll work. And we don't know that any given year, we might have excessive rainfall. That happens here in Southern California. And a problem could occur in one, five or ten years, I won't challenge the actuary, possible is me being around after that, but who knows? These things just come up, all right? And I have discussed this with the architect for the property, and basically I'm, I'm being, what I'm hearing is that the city legally can't be responsible for any drainage or debris flow into our property, and that the owner of the development is not willing to take on themselves. And as far as responsibility. And I can't see any way that we as the potential victims would be responsible. And so I guess I have to say, I feel that what I'm hearing is a really irresponsible action by the proposal, okay? And just wanted to go on record once again, as not opposing the development, but concerned about something that could happen to our property that we certainly should not have to be responsible for in any fashion. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for those comments, the next speaker is Kimberly Larson.
Yes, I'm Kimberly Larson, I live in Dana Point, up on Silva Road, and I concur with what all has been said here, I can't add too much to that, but it just seems that this development is almost bringing up certain problems such that they can raise, raise the building and make it taller so that they can get views, which is in some ways understandable, everybody wants a view, but it's almost just creating this to make that happen any which way they can. And having a variance for the height, having a variance for open space, perhaps this isn't to be a triplex, perhaps it's, it's, should be a duplex. And it just seems that there's many ways that they could lower the, lower the height, doing some of the things that the prior people have, have mentioned. And also with this being so tall, what's going to happen with the property next to it? They're going to want that view too. And so it's just creeping up and creeping up such that the people around them are being impacted on property values, on light. I mean, when you take a look at some of the, the views that are being eliminated, it's really impacting people's property values. And it just seems like there could be a much more, use a little bit more creativity to bring it down. And so I don't oppose development on these properties, it would be nice, but I think they've sat for quite a while because of this problem, and maybe they shouldn't be maximizing and trying to get the views so bad and jeopardizing other people's property values and views. Thank you.
All right, thank you, our last speaker, I'm not sure if it's Rob or Bob Williams. Rob. I mean, he filled out the speaker sheet, that's all.
Good evening, my name is Rob Williams, I'm the architect, I represent the owner on this project. I've chosen to speak last to go over some of the questions that have come up by the neighbors, but I'm also, I could wait until after you guys talk, if you got any questions, that way we can answer them all, it's strictly up to you guys.
So this is your opportunity to speak freely for three minutes, and if we have no questions, then there's no other opportunity to speak.
Okay. Let me go through it, obviously we, we did meet with the neighbors in February with John and with Commissioner Nelson, and answered as many questions that we could, they had a lot of good questions, and we went back and forth. We located the property lines, kind of, there was a confusion on exactly how does that property line sit as it relates to the neighbors next door? But let me answer, go through a few of the questions. Obviously, it's a challenging site, there's no doubt. I mean, it's the reason why those two lots are vacant for so long. And we have been going back and forth with staff, and we obviously got back and forth with the commission, we came back originally in, on August of last year to try to figure out a couple of different, different options, and we landed on this one as far as not adding additional retaining walls, to just come in and ask for a variance in height, and that was the direction that we got from the planning commission at that time. Let me ask, answer a couple of quick questions. We actually looked at trying to get that driveway down as quick as possible by turning that front unit so the garage could actually come in off of Silva. There's a twenty-foot setback there, you know, from essentially the property line to the unit which we are sitting on right now. That driveway, one, would have to be almost level, which would raise Unit A by around forty-five feet. Because if you notice, Unit A's finished floor, finished surface of the garage is down lower, and you step down into it from the front area, so we'd have to raise that entire unit up. Plus, we don't have the room, because there's no way the traffic engineer is going to allow us to back onto Silva. It's a busy street, it's also a turn lane, it starts going into a turn lane. So that design was thrown out to the design we have right now. Adding a little more length to that driveway, even if we could do an alternate design like that, probably maybe a foot and a half, two feet we've regained based on the different transitions. Because we can't just go down fifteen percent, we got to transition at the top, go at fifteen percent and start transitioning down at the bottom. So you don't get the length that you might expect to get to get those units down so low. I am going to kind of talk real quick regarding Donald and the drainage. Our project has to drain within itself, so everything on our property drains down to a lower level and we're pumping everything up. So there's no drainage from our property that is going to go onto other properties. The concern that he has is the vacant lot next door could have a little bit more concentrated drainage, because it's going to hit the side of our wall and go down to that. I can't control the neighbors, the city's not, doesn't want to control that, so there's nothing we can do with a vacant lot that we don't know.
Okay, if you can wrap up, please.
That's, that's all I got. Like I said, I'm the applicant, any questions you might have, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right, we'll let you know if we do, thank you. All right, with that, I will open it up to, sorry, I will close the public hearing, and I will open it up to Commissioners for comments. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have some questions actually first, if you don't mind. We may have gone over some of these, John, but I want to just go back through and make sure I, I'm on the same page, I understand. So a lot of speakers come up tonight, and one of the topics that came up several times is finished grade, and so could you walk me through the measurement of finished grade and why there's two points? And then walk me through the retaining wall scenario that was discussed at the last, at the first planning commission meeting where there was some direction that was given to the applicant?
Certainly. So the zoning court, the zoning ordinance for, for subdivisions requires the structures to be measured from finished grade. Since there's two structures proposed, they're being measured from the lowest finished grade that makes contact with the building, which is along that southern elevation. That's the, the greatest distance between the, the finished grade and the tallest point of the structure which is being used to measure the structures, which is resulting in the thirty feet in height, or thirty-two and a half feet in height for the front building and thirty feet in height for the rear structure. So the, the measurement is from finished grade for the associated structure in terms of the height, the way the height is being measured. Now, in relation to the second question related to the retaining walls, the city, the city, given that it's a subdivision, the project's measured, as I said, from finished grade. So if a retaining wall were to be proposed along that southern elevation, which would artificially elevate the grade, they could put in a retaining wall to accomplish a design that would have an overall height that, to comply with the twenty-four foot height requirement, which would be applicable here, given the flat roof design. So that design would also result in the retaining wall itself. So that was something that was the initial result of the preliminary review by the planning commission to discuss and consider, okay, there's a retaining wall design that would essentially result in a wall of up to approximately eight or nine feet along that south elevation, which would be located essentially on the, on the side property line. So the structures would comply with the, with the height requirement, however, it would result in additional structure being relocated closer to the building, or to the adjacent building, the neighbors, which was identified as a potential concern. And so the alternative was looked at was the variance, so the variance would eliminate that wall and result in the overall height of the structure, the, the highest elevation point for each structure remaining unchanged in terms of that, that highest point, but would provide additional separation between the two structures, allow for additional landscaping, and that separation, which I think was, was evaluated as a, a benefit in that design consideration, given that it would eliminate that wall and that congestion that would be associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Couple of things, I want to make sure on the earthwork quantity, has that been, you know, looked at as, you know, we've got numbers, some people saying, you know, thousands of cubic feet, the, the map says that it balances.
Yes, so the, that has been reviewed by the applicant, it was provided as supporting document ten with the updated preliminary grading plan, which illustrated, which modified what the, what the proposed fill was associated with the lot, so it is now accurately represented.
Okay. And then how does solar, how do we measure solar panels?
So the solar panels would be reviewed as part of the, the building permit phase. I, I can't speak to the exact requirements as far as the building code, whether panels are actually required, or if the project design is able to comply with the panels, to allow for solar. However, if you, the design of the buildings, the roof design is stepped for both structures, so panels could be located, and, and the roof design is flat, so panels could be located on lower roof portions that wouldn't result in an overall increase in the height.
Okay, but I guess what I'm, I guess the question I have is on our, in our code, do we, how do we measure solar panels? Are they included in the overall measurement, are they excluded and, you know, assumed to be an accessory, or, you know, like we have encroachment for eaves and stuff like that, are solar panels considered just an encroachment into the height, or the, or do you measure, is that your, your ultimate building height is capped and so is your solar?
I believe, I believe that the panels are allowed to encroach, but I'd have to, I'd have to defer certainty on that.
Okay. But, and if they're not, then they have to comply with the height.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, lastly, I don't know if you can speak to this, but we've had this continuous discussion about the drainage and some concerns about the flow and the receiving properties and what, what the potential impacts are. Have we looked, is there any concern from the city's perspective that there's going to create a flow problem, or, I know there's drainage along the, I guess it'd be the northerly wall, and down in the corner where the retaining wall, you know, has a ninety-degree angle, there's a big drain, but have we looked at drainage to know that we're not going to create a big problem by developing the site?
So the, the drainage in concept has been reviewed and considered, however, a detailed drainage plan will be produced by the project, project team, which will be completed by an engineering firm to ensure that any issues are analyzed.
Okay, so we'll do like a full hydrology plan and then like a PLID?
That's correct.
Low impact development design, which will limit the amount of flow, I mean, there's a, and then water quality management plan, I would assume there's multiple water quality requirements that address drainage?
That's correct, and that'll be reviewed by the city's Public Works Department as well as, as planning and the Building Division.
Okay, and that's tied to our, the city's permits too, right, our MS four permitting?
That's correct.
The assumption is that if the city isn't doing their job, the city's going to get in big trouble by the San Diego MS four permitting.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I think that was it for my questions.
Jonathan, you've mentioned the fill, could you tell me how much fill is again?
Give me just one moment.
I think I found on the grading plan, a thousand thirty cubic yards, is that correct?
Yeah, can I just confirm with the architect that that is the accurate number, correct? Yes, one thousand thirty cubic yards.
All right, are there any further questions of staff or the applicant at this time?
Was there any discussion with the adjacent neighbor regarding the retaining wall that would be closer to them versus the current plan that's further away?
That was discussed at the, at the site meeting, and the rationale, Commissioner Nelson did also participate in that conversation related to that, and the city's point of view was, was presented to the, to the neighbors along the Copper Lantern property.
Are we confident that all of the neighbors understand all of the edge conditions that are going to happen on this project? Because when I was out there, I, I met one of, one of the neighbors that lived in, in a property just to the south, and she didn't have a clue as to what, what fencing was going to be removed, where the, where the retaining walls were going to be located, you know, how the, the copper, the interconnection between the planner on Copper Lantern and the retaining wall, how that was, and just one, you know, one point of view, but it seems to me like there's, there's still, even though we've had a separate meeting, there's still a lack of understanding on how this project is going to impact everyone.
So staff has been at to the property at least in, on three occasions and spoke to a significant number of neighbors associated with, or in adjacent to the property, and staff has gone through the plans with them, as well as the plans have been available on the city's website, and discussed some of the nuances is that there are a number of improvements that do encroach into the subject property that have occurred over the course of, you know, the many decades, and staff has presented, you know, where those property lines are, the actual, the property line has been staked by the applicant to further assist them in providing the context of the proposed development. providing the context of the proposed development. So I, I would say that staff has made themselves as available as possible to articulate those elements. And, and so I think to, to the extent that they have voiced their concerns, staff has been available to them to provide those answers.
It, it wasn't directed at you, Jack. It was more directed at, as I was telling earlier today, good planning doesn't take place within just the four corners of the zoning and subdivision map act. It takes the developer, the architects, the entire team, meeting with property owners that surround, that surround the development, and walking through with all the stakeholders, what their concerns are and how it's going to impact them. That's, that's what, the message I was trying to get out.
Understood.
Alright, thank you. With that, I want to open it up then for Commissioner comments. Vice Chair Nelson?
Yep. I'll take the, I'll take the lead here. So I, I was the one who asked for the continuance, because I had many of the concerns that Commissioner Gabbard brought up relative to the neighbors, and whether or not the applicant had done a good enough job walking them through the, the project. And what became clear in that meeting was, there was missing information. There's information I didn't have that I wanted relative to the improvements on the neighbor's property. And, and, you know, and I think, I think I told this to the applicant, you know, it was unfortunate that we had to continue it, because, you know, overall, I, I didn't have any major objections to the project. I had some concerns. My biggest issue that evening was that we had neighbors that didn't understand how we ended up where we ended up, and we had asked the applicant to spend time in the neighborhood. And without getting into the context of that, it, it didn't happen to the extent that I had hoped that it would. So we had our, we, I personally was on that site meeting. That was the second time I visited the site. I met with the, the architect, the first time with the neighbors. I also visited the site prior to the hearing by myself. I walked by the site on a almost daily basis with my dog. And, you know, it is a continuous challenge for any developer that's ever tried to move something forward here. This is, in my six years, this is the second project that's tried to make an attempt at moving forward. And, you know, overall, I've been fairly pleased with the plan. We gave the, this commission gave the architect slash developer some direction relative to the walls. And I, and I think, at the end of the day, that was good direction, regardless of the requirement for a variance. What it does do is it creates a buffer, and an appropriate one, given, you know, that this site runs perpendicular to the neighbor's site. And, you know, creating an obvious, not conflict, but, you know, a condition that nobody's been used to, because nothing's been built here. So I've got, you know, my experience tells me that everything that gets built blocks somebody's view. That's the reality of Dana Point. If you live on a hill, depending on where you live on that hill, some point, your view will get blocked. I live on somewhat of a hill, and I have a single-story home with no view. And the minute I put a roof, a second floor on, my neighbor's not going to have a view that they have. And, and I understand that that's a concern, and, and, you know, for many reasons, the city has never, has decided to not take views on as anything that we protect, except for the public views from the public right-of-way. And that's outlined very strictly in our general plan. So, at the end of the day, you know, like I said, I visited the site, I met with the adjacent neighbors. I live, you know, fairly close in the district. I've reviewed the plans and all the neighboring communities. In fact, I've walked extensively through the neighboring streets to look at the different structures there, and how they are, aren't the same. And, you know, the reality of Dana Point is it's a, it's a hodgepodge of every type of architectural theme out there. I have a mid-century modern home. We just saw a historical application that is a Spanish architecture. So, you know, it runs the gamut, and, and we don't have design review authority up here. And I think we've always been very careful not to design projects, but to try to help applicants move things forward and point out issues that they have to deal with. But as it relates to redesigning or architectural input, it's not something I've seen this commission have any interest in doing, and, and our code doesn't provide for that. So, in looking at the project, in the proposal, the required variances to address the significant topography here, you know, I'm in full support of the project. I'm in support of it because it meets our density, it meets our general plan designation, it meets all the development standards, with the exception of the variances. It's absolutely suitable for multifamily development, which is what's being proposed. And it is in context with the neighborhood, with, within the bulk and the height of adjacent structures. A neighboring home, or a condo building is three stories. This is a two-story home that goes down the side of a hill. You know, the variance itself is to address not only the topography, but the location, the access, the depth of the site. And those are all factors that I certainly take into account. I am one who believes that the variance is part of our development code, and not an exception to the code, or a loophole, that it actually provides for situations just like this, where development is going to occur, and it can be shaped and honed, so it's the best possible development. In this case, the variance, as opposed to having the applicant come in and put big walls along that property line, is the appropriate way to move this forward. And, you know, I don't believe that this is a grant of special privilege, or that they're getting anything in particular that somebody else wouldn't get. And for those reasons, I'm fully supportive of the project tonight.
Additional comments? Mr. Donner?
I concur with, with Commissioner Nelson's summary. When I listened on the eighth, there were nine presenters. And at that time, noise was an issue with two. Four people were concerned about ocean views, and one with drainage. And we had three more presenters, and ocean views were an issue. And, and that is, is something that, as previously stated, the city does not protect, because it's impossible to go back in time, and for someone that's there now versus somebody that's going to be there in the future. So for those reasons, I support the project.
Mr. Gabbard?
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues on their comments on the suitability for the project. I just want to throw out some concerns that I have. When I looked at the project, I'm seeing a 127-foot retaining wall. I've seen at least two sewer lift stations, if not three, I still don't know how's Unit A sewers. I'm looking at a sub-pump, 112-foot forest main, and several thousand square feet of common area that's going to have to be maintained by three property owners. And what, what those HOA dues are going to look like. And I'm worried that the only exit strategy for this project, given all of the cost and how much, how expensive it's going to be to build this thing out, is that the only way you can, you can get out from underneath this project is to sell it to a REIT and turn it into three short-term dwelling, or short-term rental units, and try to make money back that way. I don't know if that's the case or not, but that's my concern. I think it's fright, it's going to be frightfully expensive to build. And, you know, I would just ask that when we look at the CCNRs, that we put a restriction on the CCNRs, it says that no more than one unit can be permitted at a time for short-term rentals. I know that we've got a moratorium on short-term rentals right now, and we don't know what the code's going to look like with the pilot program yet. I think we've got the bones of it. But I don't want to see this thing turning into a, you know, three, three-unit hotel in the middle of a residential district. So I wish you luck, and I support the project.
Alright, thank you. I really echo the comments that Vice Chair Nelson has provided. I was supportive of this previously. But I want to thank both Vice Chair Nelson, as well as Planner Chiampa, for actually going out and spending the time meeting with the residents, and trying to do their best to explain it. And so I am still in favor of the project. So with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve tentative parcel map TPM 20-0002, variance V20-0003, minor site development permit STP 20-0014M, and administrative modification